Can we have a quorum check?
Yes, ma'am. Councilwoman Contreras, Councilmember Vincent, Councilman Runenbaum, Mayor Protim Young, and Councilmember Primmel, Mayor Dolmoss is absent.
All right, thank you very much. If we could all rise for a moment. All right, thank you, and if you could join us in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right, the first thing we have is public comments. We have Ms. Paige J. Hannah.
My name is Paige J. Hannah, I live at 177 Melbourne Drive in Willow Park, Texas. Counsel, may I ask a few questions about two items on tonight's council agenda? First, item three on tonight's agenda, authorize the mayor's signature on a Chapter 380 agreement between the city and UNCO. The council has met several times in executive session about a Chapter 380 agreement. So tonight during the open agenda item, will the council please elaborate? For example, what is a 380 agreement? What does it mean for the city? What does it mean for taxes? What does it mean for city services? And who or what is an UNCO? There's no paperwork in tonight's agenda package for this item, not even the usual cover briefing page. And as an aside, if it is produced, we have a copy posted on the website with tonight's agenda. So all I could find was UNCO Hospitality Group or Restaurants. So with whom is the city making a Chapter 380 Economic Development Agreement? Second, the only executive session agenda item tied indicates consultation with attorney, Chapter 380, and Fort Cardroom. Putting the Chapter 380 in the Fort Cardroom under the same executive session agenda item implies these two items are linked. What do they have in common? Or is this just a misstatement and they have nothing to do with each other? If that is the case, why would the discussion of the Fort Cardroom be made in executive session and not in an open session? Unless that's a misstatement and the executive session conversation with legal counsel is about a lawsuit or potential lawsuit according to, for the Fort Cardroom. If that's the case, shouldn't the executive session agenda item indicate Fort Cardroom potential lawsuit? We certainly don't expect the council to give details about issues you discuss in executive sessions. But are the citizens allowed to ask for a more precise executive session agenda statement? Thank you.
Thank you. All right, the first item on our regular agenda is discussion to consider street improvement and park projects. Please, you can start, or Derek?
You want to do rock, paper, scissors? Counsel, you have in front of you, and we've discussed this several times, potential road improvement projects, street improvements. I did not, I don't believe you, is there a map? I think I put a map there.
Yeah.
Anything else in front of you? Rose, do we have that up? Did I tell you to put that up?
All I have is the priority list, I don't have a map.
Yes, ma'am, thank you, I apologize for that. So, we've discussed a number of different projects. We've kind of honed in on this, what I call the yellow grouping of projects. This would include all the concrete projects we have at this time, as well as some reconstruction on some residential, primarily residential areas. We will have, is it going into this Friday, Crystal? We got that confirmed from the community news.
Yes, sir.
So, we do have a notice of intent to issue debt that's going into the community news this Friday for an amount up to seven and a half million. That seven and a half million will allow you to do street and some park system improvements, so you can use it for both activities, although I would assume primarily most of this will be for street construction. You do not have to use the full seven and a half, you can come down to as low of an amount as you please. We want to give you all the options available to you. So as you look at the spreadsheet here, if you just take out your concrete projects, you're probably looking at around roughly four million. If you did the first two boxes, box one and box two, it's about five million. If you did box one and box three, it's about 4.8. And if you did all three boxes, it's about 6.6 million. And the map will show you where those projects are. Primarily, it is concrete replacement from the intersection of Crown and Ranch House to Vista, which is the northwest portion of our city limits. It's also concrete on Crown down to, there's a certain, what's that subdivision that's in Weatherford, Derek? That gated.
Crown Valley.
Crown Valley, thank you. It'd be concrete down to Crown Valley. There is, there it takes over by the city of Weatherford, and so obviously, we would not be doing any work in the city of Weatherford. It does concrete on, where Squaw Creek turns into Sam Bass, it takes that asphalt out, it, excuse me, puts concrete up the hill all the way to Ranch House Road. There's also going to be a drainage component part of that. There's a culvert there that will need to be replaced, but we can pay for that out of drainage funds, not necessarily out of the CO. There's also a concrete component on Kingsgate, and that's an intriguing part to us. Betty and I have had some discussions today about Kingsgate. Part of that, that is an eligible project in the TERS agreement, which was signed in 2016 with Wilks Development. Betty, you want to elaborate on that a little bit?
As part of the TERS agreement, there were, there was estimated approximately eight million dollars' worth of eligible improvements that could be reimbursed through the development of the TERS. There was eight hundred, well over $820,000 that was set aside for Kingsgate Road Extension to be funded through the TERS, and that was to be, it was not including the bridge. The bridge was an exclusion. But as it, as Kingsgate goes back to the north up the hill, as it adjoined the property that was within the development for the TERS, there was, like I said, about $820,000 set aside for Kingsgate roadway improvements, and they would be eligible for reimbursement. Actually, it could be eligible for reimbursement, potentially either to the city or the developer, whoever, whoever makes the improvements, or if it was, I think originally, it was contemplated that that possibly could be a joint venture with the city, the developer, and then, of course, you know, the bridge was another consideration, and that's why it was limited in that respect, so the developer would not be paying for the bridge replacement. So there is the potential for approximately $820,000 of reimbursement for Kingsgate.
And that would be through the taxes that come into the TERS with the developer?
Yes.
Yes.
Which would exclude it from potentially this package?
Yes.
Is it excluded or reimbursable?
Yes.
Okay.
Whereas we would do it, and then Wilks Development would...
In other words, the tax from that, from the TERS would pay for that, or reimburse the city versus the developer? There, you know, there's different projects within that, that could be, you know, be too fault with reimbursement.
How long would it take us to have those discussions to figure out if that's something that would be actionable from? So if we decided to pay for it by the city, it could be reimbursed? That's a start right away?
Yeah.
If we asked the developer to do it, how long would we...
You know, I guess it would be...
And not get reimbursed?
Probably more of an engineering question, but I would think maybe, you know, if we're doing a lot of those projects, you know, laying a lot of concrete, obviously, it would be a better price, so, you know, we could possibly negotiate the reimbursement, either the developer participate with us or vice versa.
It would happen faster if we do it and ask to be reimbursed?
And possibly have a better, possibly have a better price, earlier foot, because we're laying more concrete.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Just thank you.
Do we know when they're going to start pouring streets in that town home development, the third phase across the street from the Gates Apartments?
Pretty quick. They're working on utilities right now.
Okay, I saw, I've seen the drainage out there, but I didn't know if they had.
Nothing holds them up, couple ones.
I was gonna say about TERS here, hang on.
Okay.
Was this just open discussion about the topic?
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So, this is a really, I mean, this issue's been around forever. So, seven and a half years ago in the election, the issues were water, sewer, roads, and improve the sales tax base, and help pay for it. And three years ago, when you had somebody running against you, the last time we had an election, wasn't it, was it two and a half?
About nineteen was the last.
Yeah. So, same thing, I mean, the old, water, roads, sewer, and business, and new business to help pay for with the sales tax. So nothing has changed, from what I see, that, you know, and it's always an overwhelming majority in this city that want those things done. So, for us to wait around and delay anything on roads, in my opinion, is, is not what the majority of citizens in this city wants done. They want actions on the roads now, and we've got, what, 22 miles, 23 miles? And, in my opinion, we should take as big a bite of that right now as possible, that we can financially support with this wraparound funding, and get these problems solved. I mean, we've got the water solved, the sewer, we've got nice growth in the business, so this is trailing badly. Even though we got Ranch House done, and some other streets, it's trailing badly. We've got to get this knocked out. I appreciate the improvements we want to make to the parks, but, in fact, I think there's other things we can do park-wise, but I think maybe that is for something later for a bond election, and we wrap all the things we want in parks and possibly some other projects for a bond election next year or the year after. Don't have a problem with any of the things that you want to do with parks, it's just every penny of funding right now, I think, should go to the roads, from what I see. That's what people want, so.
Okay. Anybody else have any?
Brian, on our street priority, or street project priority list, the first box, the second line is Kingsgate. Are you saying that the TERS?
The TERS has the pricing at 820,000. We priced it out at 757,000. I don't know why there's such a discrepancy, maybe Kyle has just bet, I don't know. But this is the pricing that we've come up with, starting back in, what, September or August, when we started putting this together?
Yeah. So, so how would that work? How would that work if we accept that project of Kingsgate, and then we get the TERS to reimburse, right?
So, it's an eligible project.
Okay.
What you're asking is, we do it, and then we go to Kyle, and we say, we're going to get, we're going to reimburse ourself out of the TERS.
Right.
Kyle would have to agree to that, is that correct? When I say Kyle Wilks Development, it's just easier to say Kyle. The cleanest way for this to happen is not necessarily the fastest way, which is Kyle would accept Kingsgate as an improvement in the TERS, and then he would be reimbursed through normal TERS methods. So you could take out 757,000 out of your project. Kyle's indicated in the past that he's not really interested in doing any more projects, but I will say that I think if there's a project for Kyle that he would want to see done, it would be Kingsgate. It is, it will be the arterial into his subdivision. It will be the most traveled road into his subdivision in the next three to four years. And at some point, it's going to need to be improved upon, versus what it is now. It would make sense to put the street in before the development gets here. So I think there's a conversation to be had with Kyle for sure, but I don't want to speak to whether or not he would do it. But eventually, Kyle would have to sign off on this one way or another, is that, is that correct, Betty?
Okay.
The other part of it is Kyle would only go up to a certain point on Kingsgate, so he would theoretically go up to where the townhomes stop, and then it would convert into asphalt. This goes all the way up the hill, and, and that's the main priority for putting Kingsgate in concrete, other than the heavy traffic that's going to be on it. That hill and the water coming down from it will deteriorate the asphalt. Michelle, you guys have patched that thing ad nauseam, and it just washes out, and so that needs to be repaired.
So, we know that this TERS agreement does not include the bridge, does our price include the bridge?
No, no, our price does not include the bridge. The bridge is eligible to be, in fact, it is getting done by Text Dot. They're going to improve it. I was told it will be let in '22?
'23, I believe.
Okay. Couldn't remember.
So we could, we might do this construction around it, right? And then they're going to come in and tear it all up, and...
They'll do the bridge, they'll do 150 feet on either side of the bridge.
So if we do concrete, they're going to match it with concrete, right?
Yes. Yeah, and it's the same spec, right? Same standard, same?
Yeah.
So Derek, I have a question there, so it doesn't get off that, is, so, does that make sense to do our portion, Kyle's portion, whatever, Wilks Development, and leave the bridge the way it is, and then have them come back? I mean, I'm not, I mean, can you, I assume you'd be expanding the road slightly for that bridge?
Yeah.
You know, so you'd have, does that make sense from an engineering and contractual standpoint to have it, have the bridge after the concrete?
Well, I mean, normally, you, the sequence would be the bridge and the road. If you're sure that the, that the bridge is going in, which I think we are, I mean, it's budgeted.
It's just 2023.
Then we just have to make sure we match their design.
Okay.
So, I mean, I don't really see a problem with it, but...
Okay.
We'd want to be really careful that we, grades and things like that are matched.
That we have their definite design?
Right.
Which I think they already have, don't they?
I don't think they have their design, but they're working on it.
So we would have...
They're ahead of us in that.
So Brian, my question, and I don't know if this, Eric, if you were headed there, is how does that work with reimbursement? You go out for a CO for a certain amount that includes this $800,000, when that gets reimbursed to the CO, what's done with that money? Is that a future road project? How does that, I mean, it's reimbursed to the city, but we had a CO that was specific for roads.
So, it would probably, you could, you could put that in towards debt service, so...
Okay, any debt service, or just road debt service?
You would, you would want to pay off the CO with it, so if you, if you did, let's just say seven and a half, because that's the number in front of me.
Right.
You did seven and a half million, and 750,000 of it is Kingsgate, and then you get reimbursed 750,000, you would take that money and initially, you would apply to it.
Okay. Then we would have more money than we need for these projects?
Yes.
Which we would have already let? And so there would just, that's what I'm saying.
Just pay it off faster, right?
Yeah, you just pay it off, you could pay it off faster, or you could, you could, I want to see what you're saying, you could put that in there and do more project with it.
Like have another line item in there, another matchable road?
Yeah.
Just, okay.
So, so back to the TERS agreement, so you said we have to get the Wilks Development agreement on this. So, so walking through this process, how the, how the TERS works is they come up with a set of projects that the city has to approve, right?
They've already done that in 2016.
Right, and this is on that list?
Yes.
So if they were to run out and do that road, then the TERS committee, or the TERS, the city would, and the TERS...
TERS Board?
Board would have to approve that reimbursement.
So...
So, yeah, I'm...
And I think, y'all have this in front, I thought I put this...
Yeah, we, yeah, okay.
So, yeah, I see it. So, so in reality, even if the Wilks Development didn't agree with that project, with the funding of it, to be reimbursed, I'm not sure what legal issues we come up with there.
If Kyle, if Wilks Development says we're not, it's not, we're not doing the project, we're not going to participate in it, you're stuck with doing Kingsgate one way or the other. I'm glad we're having this conversation now and not having it November the 9th, because I think we've got three weeks that we could visit with Kyle and say, you're going to benefit the most from this.
Yeah.
Would you like to, he'll get paid back, so it's not like he's, he's, you know, it's not like he'll be out any money, he'll get paid back through normal, like, through the TERS agreement. I wanted to bring this up to you guys tonight to let you know it is an eligible project. It is something that you could do. In Kingsgate, I think, I don't know if I'm speaking for everybody, I think Kingsgate needs to be done.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. And I don't think hunting it, maybe that's not the right word to use, but kicking it over to, as a TERS project, to be done at the whim of the developer is not the right thing to do. We have an obligation to do this now, in my opinion, so let's do it, so.
If you wait, if you kick the can down the road, you're waiting on Kyle to either do it or issue debt for it later.
And that could be a year, it could be 10 years, or clever, it's fine, so.
So let me ask a little bit, description on the TERS, is the TERS is paid back from taxes, property taxes into, so we have a list of projects, that it's just, like, that money will be paid out to some, but that potentially means if he picks Kingsgate, another project doesn't get done that's an eligible project, correct?
Yes.
Like, there's only so much money he has in his TERS.
Yes, he has eight, he has eight million dollars of estimated project costs.
Okay.
Crown Point Extension, he's already done. I guess the public parking, is that for the, is that for the park area?
Yes.
Shops Boulevard, he's done, water lines, he's done, San Andreas Sewer, he's done, Shoreham Drain, he's done. Obviously, he's going to collect his administrative fees on it. Meadows Place Drive, the continuation of it, is probably the last big project, and that is, that may be changing.
Okay.
And so Meadows Place is the last, I'm sorry, Willow Park, or, sorry, Kingsgate, I'm looking at the wrong deal. Kingsgate Road Extension is one of three projects that are left. He's got the public parks and trail system, is that, he's already...
He's done that.
Is that the portion of it?
The remainder of it was adjacent to the Clear Forest.
Yes.
Some of those improvements, they have not.
They have not done that. They have not done Meadows Place Drive, which is, he has about 1.8, and then Kingsgate Road, which is 828,000. And, so for him to get the full, if he doesn't do these projects, he's not going to get paid the full eight man back. So at some point, he's going to have to do them, or find other means to do them.
Okay, that answered my question.
Okay.
Thank you. So, so we can further investigate how this would potentially impact before the November 9th meeting?
Yes.
How that looks for a total, on what we're looking at.
I guess the question I'm asking is, what is a total amount that you guys are comfortable with? We did seven and a half million, but that, that's not necessarily what you have to do. You can do, obviously, you can't go above it, but you can do less. I know how Greg feels about some parks projects. Do y'all want us to start investigating parks projects, or what is y'all's appetite for that?
Well, let me tell you where we are with Parks Board. We will need to reschedule our Parks Board meeting that was going to be for November 11th, because that is Veterans Day. So we do have a Parks Board meeting coming up, and we could potentially, I'll have to talk with Bill and Tony and see if we can schedule it for prior to the November 9th meeting, probably Monday, the 8th, but, so it's possible that we could have a little bit of discussion at the Parks Board about things that we would be looking at. I think, in general, we've been talking about something similar to the last package we did, when we did the tax note, and about a half a million to do improvements, a list of projects that we could choose from, that we would never fund all of them. So, improving the existing Cross Timbers Park, doing some of Phase 2, improving that, potentially looking at some other park spaces that we have, that the money could go to that. So, absolutely, we can talk about different prices that we put in this. I'm going to say, I personally not invested to having it, other than the fact that I think when you do a CO specifically, and not a GO, parks, the whole city benefits, every person, if you never drive on a road that we're able to do this time, everybody has access to the parks, and that makes it so that the taxes that are being spent go to the whole community, and it's nice to have that balance of something, that you're saying we're doing something for everybody to benefit with. And that's a lot of why, when we did Ranch House Road in the tax note, we added the playground. It was a priority that had to be obsessed. Trails is our next one, as far as the Parks Master Plan, so. That is to give you an update of where our Parks Board has been talking and looking, is really focusing on some trails, nature path type of things, options that we might have, so.
How about a proposed middle ground, then? So we've got this potential, what, 800, 850K, 828K? If we take the 7.5, add the eight, to, we're at seven, we're at eight, three, and we say, we need 400,000 to 500,000 for parks, that would make our roads projects at seven, eight, if I had to do my math right, correct? And then the balance for parks, presuming that we can reach an agreement with the Wilks Development to recover that 800K, and just roll that into the overall project at this time, so we take the biggest bite we can on these roads.
So you're saying do it the full seven and a half for roads, if we get reimbursed, it could go to parks, a portion of that?
Well, we just assume, well, between now and next meeting, we have a discussion. If we think that's a possibility, then let's take the CO to 8.3.
Well, we can't go 8.3.
Oh, that's right.
You can't go above some point.
That's what I was saying.
We can, we can say, we can see where we stand with the reimbursement.
Well, I'll give my opinion on 7.5 versus, my number's 5.5, and I, Brian and I go through every August, September budget discussions, where I say, everything you're telling me is great, I start at the other side. What's the tax rate? What's the tax rate? Now back out what you're going to have for your project, because I'm going to tell you you're not going to raise taxes. So, that's a little bit of what I do to come up with cutting some of the road project now, is when I look at, and I run the numbers, I took what we started with, with Mahah, which was a 1% growth, which is not really practical to look at. He gave us 4% growth, that's certainly what he can do, what he can discuss openly. I've looked at 8%, so I've had Brian work with me to come up with 8%. So I think that's a more logical number that we may, we likely will hit, but I'm still not comfortable that if we go above 5.5 million on this CO, I think, everything I've looked at, we have to be willing to raise the taxes next fall to pay for it. And I've said it before, I'm not. I raise taxes to get police and fire, I want to see it go the other way. It's not that I don't see the priority, there's no question, roads are the next priority that we have to hit, it's how much, how big of a bite, as we said. The biggest bite possible, I say the biggest bite is 5.5, and that's eliminating the third option on it. So that is just my perspective of saying, if you're going to tell me, and I can ask Brian, are you comfortable telling me that I will not have to raise taxes with 7.5 million?
My, so my answer is going to be, and I've discussed this with both y'all, my answer is, at 5.5 million, I feel good, I feel good that you can keep the same tax rate, probably actually lower it. I'll say about the same tax rate with the, with the fluctuation, but you'll be around 26.5.
Right.
For next year. Um, for next year. Keep in mind, you don't make a payment until February of '23. Your debt cliff is, it starts in '27. '26 is the last year where you have the massive payment. In '26, your debt service right now, today, without any additional debt, is 1.7 million in 2026. In 2027, your debt service amount drops to 887,000. So you have roughly a million dollars of capacity between '26 and '27. That's the cliff that we've been talking about, and I think we all know that ad nauseam. So really, what you want to look at is the first three to four years. Without, to to go down your trail of not raising the rate, you want to look at the first three to four years. Um, five and a half million from Maha gets you 180, excuse me, where do we have our glasses? 180, 176, 176, 176, and then you go to 235 in '27. If you do five and a half million, I feel really good that you won't have to raise the tax rate. If you do six and a half million, it gets dicey. It gets interesting. So somewhere between five and a half to six and a half, so just if you call it six, that would probably be the ceiling for not having a tax rate increase. Keep in mind, it may, the 10 thousandths of a decimal may be changed a little bit.
Right.
If you do seven and a half, to your point, you need to be prepared. I'm not saying you're going to have to, but you need to be prepared to raise the tax rate. And if you did seven and a half mil, you pretty much have maxed out for, I'd say, at least three years. You cannot really issue any more significant debt for the next three years.
Well, I would say my hope on getting to, I mean, this is, as you called it, it's the yellow group. There's pink and green, and we, it just keeps going. It's not going to stop it. And so my hope would be that if economic situations turn out better and we aren't having, we do have surpluses or the tax rates look like they can hold steady, and we do have debt capacity a year, two years from now, we can do another road package. We can just keep bumping down our list and saying that's how we want to approach it is we are, we have this list prioritized, which would be tweaked each year, but the idea of getting to that point of saying, now we know, now we're comfortable, we are in a place that we see. Um, I will say, when I looked at these numbers, I, I very much looked at all these numbers in August when we did the, the debt, and I said, let's lower our INS rate so that we don't have to, we will use that to hire our firefighters and our police. Let's do that. And what that meant was, we couldn't have this discussion for roads. If we had done that, we couldn't have this discussion. So I definitely agree that we want to look and and have and address this as much as we can, but it concerns me that, um, that we won't have options and we could be locked into a tax rate increase. And so, one question I would have on saying that, and then I'll, I don't want to, as I chair the meeting, don't want to dominate the discussion. Um, for that, as we, as we came up with four or five sections of getting through the roads over 10 years or whatever, do you see, is there economies of scale that we're losing by doing projects every one to two years versus bigger projects every three to five?
Well, prices are going up.
Right, okay.
That's where, that's where you're losing now.
Right. But if we do a bigger project now and can't do anything for three years, on that next, the price of all that.
Goes up that much more.
Yeah, but.
I, I mean, when you get into these numbers on a project, you're, you're getting the economy of scale.
Okay.
Anyway.
All right, so splitting them up differently.
It's just the time, you know, the, the inflation is what is the only thing that's going to be changed.
Let me ask you a question, Derek. If we, so let's just assume all factors. And let's just say we do the first two boxes. So you're not doing Fox Hunt, you're not doing Appaloosa Sand Bass, that's east of Ranch House. You take those out. We get funded, we issued debt in December. Let's say we get funded sometime in January. You guys get about four months, three, three months of design, whatever.
Like four, better.
Okay. Or two weeks of bids? But let's say you start construction in the summertime on, on these projects. What's your, what do you think the estimated completion date would be?
You're, you're beyond a year. So you're probably, Ranch House took about six months.
Yeah.
You want to kind of use that as a, as a guide. That was a fair, relatively small project, so, uh, I think you're probably 18 months.
18 months, okay.
For the total package here?
Top two. Yeah, I mean, you're going to have a different scenario. I mean, you're going to have multiple crews working, multiple crews going.
You think you'll have.
But I still think it'll be that.
You think you have the same contractor for concrete and reconstruction?
Possibly. Yeah, they, most of them do both.
Would you bid it that way? Or would you bid an alternate?
Um, what, what do you mean an alternate?
So in other words.
Would you split it into concrete and allow them to bid together?
You'd have separate bid schedules in one bid.
Okay, that's.
I would, that's what I would.
This one, this one, okay.
But you could, you could set it up to where if you got a really good price on asphalt from one concrete, uh, from one contractor,
Right.
and a, and a good price from a different one on concrete, you could split them up, do multiple contractors.
And is drainage also included? Rideaway drainage for this?
Rideaway drainage. Ditchware, culverts, not major drainage.
Right.
But if we do have major water repairs to make under some of these arterial roads, we could use potentially water funds for that to fix, to fix that infrastructure, right?
Yes, to fix water lines.
I mean, while the road's torn up, you don't, you're not going to lay a brand new road to go tear it up to put in a new water pipe a year later if we know that it's deteriorating, which is not included in the seven and a half.
There, there is minimal utility rede, or rehab included, but it's not, it's not major work.
Right. I just, if we're hamstrung, you know, th- those are different pots of money though, right?
Yes.
Okay.
But you can, I mean, as far as the project goes, water fund can pay for part of it.
Okay, that's, that was my question, I guess, I didn't ask.
It'd be project fund, it'd be project accounting at that point. Jake could, Jake would move the applicable water funds over to the project and whatnot. Let me throw something out there, and I'm, and this is going to go counter to any, and I haven't talked to any of you guys about this yet, so you're getting this, everybody's getting this live. We did, two years ago, we put 100,000 in the budget for street improvements. And I think Derek would agree, 100,000 doesn't get you a whole lot of anything by itself. Correct?
Right.
Okay. What if you did a series where we said every year, you're going to do two and a half million dollars in debt? You do a two and a half million dollar, 15-year CO every two years? Because he just said it's going to take 18 months to do a project. So you do, and I'm just throwing this out there, you do all your concrete now. You do your reconstruction in '23. So '22, you do reconstruction in '23, '24, '25, '26. Maha ran at my request. I said, if you did 2.63 million a year, so your debt service would be roughly 100 grand on interest and sinking. Every, you're adding, you would add 100 grand every year. Your frozen tax levy is roughly anywhere from 175 to 190,000 between now and '26. So what you're saying is, is that you're already paying for your infrastructure improvements by issuing smaller debt, but doing it more often. So every year, you're doing two and a half million. I think we, I, I think Derek would agree. You do the concrete first, because that's the most vulnerable price.
Probably, yeah.
So you do all your concrete projects this year, which would take, what, I mean, 12 months, 18 months?
Yeah, 12 months.
Okay. So, and you pass your budget in August or September of next year. In October of '22, you do another two and a half million, and you do reconstruction on?
Pick a group, yeah.
Yeah, pick your group. You do two and a half, you could almost do both boxes at 3 million. And so every year, you would issue a CO, small, but every year, you'd issue a small CO to do infrastructure improvements. It does a couple of things. One, you can sit there and tell residents, we're, we have a plan to get to your street at some point. The most frustrating thing, I think, and keep in mind, I've been in towns, and I know Michelle has been in a town, where we will get your road fixed, but the kid you haven't had yet is going to be graduating from high school before you can drive on it. You want to give residents hope that somewhere their street will be fixed and repaired at some point. You have neighbors that have come into City Hall and said, they were going to fix my street 10 years ago. And I'm pretty sure someone told them 10 years ago, we'll get to it. Roads is the, roads and parks are the two things that always get cut when funds get tight. They, they always have, this is the fourth city I've been at, you can get any MPA student anywhere in the, in the state. Those are the two things that get cut. And I would like to sit there and say, we're going to, we are committed to fixing roads. And we can sit there and say, next year, do this one. You'll get a new street in two years, you'll get a new street in three years, so on and so forth. I'm just throwing that out there, this is a discussion-only item, but I wanted to get y'all's temperature to see if that's even something y'all remotely want to consider.
Well, I think we have actually kind of discussed that. That's one of the reasons we came up with the, not maybe as a group, but Brian and I have discussed that. Absolutely, the idea of we were allowing 100,000 dollars, that if that had been a debt issuance, was covering our debt issuance, we could have done something with that 100,000 dollars that was in our budget, instead of just saying, okay, well, we can't really go out and do anything. Um, my question for you is, on that, is that's more frequent debt issuance, which, um, I'm going to tell you, I know the big, I'm going to speak for Doyle here, that's postponing things and prices go up. But especially the costs of debt issuance. So that means you're more frequently paying, no offense, but the banker, you know.
Fees.
You know, so.
Yeah, there's, you are absolutely correct.
There's a balance between the both approaches, the do it all.
Subject to interest rate increases.
Exactly.
Yes.
I mean, I know where they're headed.
So.
They're headed up.
Well, Matt, you gotta think about it, your council's going to change, so who's to say that?
That's your plan until the next group comes in.
Until the next group comes in, and they decide they don't want to do that.
Right.
I, I agree. Those are all factors to consider. But I wanted to provide an alternative as well.
No, I still like the idea of take the biggest bite we can, and let's figure out how we're going to get through '26 and then.
Yeah, I, I would personally say if we want to go with a plan like that, take the, the bite that we can now and, and get stuff rolling on that program, and then look at that potentially being how we. The thing I like about that too, though, is postponing, is if every year is different from an economic standpoint, then e- every year, you get a new assessment of now we have, it was COVID. So now, you know, things shut down, that wasn't a year to do projects, we didn't have extra money coming in. And I know that didn't really happen in Willow Park. We actually had a very successful COVID year, but let's say the next natural disaster, you know, that, that would be something that you are a little more comfortable that what you're forecasting in the future, you're in that point and seeing the money come in. So, um, so, yeah, and I know we're still on a discussion, so, um, is there anybody else who had? I think the point, could you describe where we go from here after this discussion tonight?
Yes, um, sorry, after, so what happens is y'all give us some direction on what you want to do. If you want to do the full seven and a half, this is, it's real easy for me and Derek to, to put something together. If you guys want to come down to five and a half, then we need to decide what we're going to cut. And we probably can do that tonight, or we can do that on the ninth, or we can do that somewhere in between, but you got to figure out what you want to cut. If you want to do 6 million, then, you know, what, what do you want to keep in? And what do, again, it's, all depends on what you want to cut, what's, what's going to get cut out. That's where the discussion's ultimately going to go, is what doesn't get fixed and what does get fixed.
Okay, so five and a half is the comfortable margin where we're not raising taxes then? Again, I go back to the TERS refund, refund. So that is additional coverage on that debt that we could add to it, so we could really bump that up to.
If we have an answer, yeah, I agree.
So I think, I think that's the first step, is let's see where we're at with that and see if that's a something we can accomplish.
I'll start that conversation tomorrow.
And that puts us at six, that puts us at 6.3. We need 6.2, it says. So, um, I like, I like that strategy.
Okay, I do too. For discussion and action at the next meeting, I think that's a good direct staff to get us that information.
Okay.
If possible, so.
Yeah, I, I, I'm, our infrastructure is deteriorating, the city's growing at a rapid pace. We need to fix it. We need to take the biggest chunk we can, and we need to fix it. That, that's where I stand on it. It's, you're just kicking the can down the road as we, and I, I don't want to raise taxes by any means, but these are tough decisions that need to be made to can, to make sure the city doesn't outgrow, you know, the infrastructure. And I've seen that happen, and you're just constantly trying to catch up. So.
Any other questions or comments?
Uh, I, I agree that we need to do something on our roads. Um, I'm on a, on a slightly different mindset where my number is five-ish million. We always want to be able to have capacity to do something for a rainy day, right? If something comes up, we want to be able to, be able to issue some sort of debt on it. Um, and I want to always make sure that, uh, we are, you know, doing our numbers on a more conservative side, that if we do have an economic recession or something that hits that is different from COVID, we do have the capacity to not put ourselves in a strain where we have to raise taxes. Um, so that's why my number's a little bit lower. Um, I, and I just want to be cautious about that. Um, but I do agree that we do need to do something. This is a, this is something that has been years that has not been addressed, and we need to get it addressed. Um, our residents want the roads, we drive on the roads. We all, we all know kind of how to swerve in the roads to miss all the potholes and everything else, and it sure would be nice to have a road where you'd have to do that, so.
John, I mean, now, I think I'm also more towards that conservative side, I don't want to raise taxes, but I also realize the need, seeing kind of what you were talking about a minute ago, Greg, with the taking that potential 800,000. And instead of, you know, we talked potential parks for that earlier, if we could put that back down onto the existing number to pay off the debt, to keep that number lower, using parks potentially later for, in a bond election where everyone could vote on something that potentially affects everyone, I think would be more advantageous for us that way, finding a happy medium of taking that 7.5 like we all kind of agreed on, but then also having a way to pay it down, to keep that number in the more manageable range, with the intent not to be raising taxes, but to, to still take the biggest bite as possible.
Agreed.
Okay, so I would say that we're directing staff. Seven, seven and a half millions, easy, I guess, we've already got that.
Yeah.
Um, for the most part. Um, and then we can come up with something, the cutting in between the idea of having the Kingsgate.
Would you all like for us to come up with suggestions when it comes time to fit the?
Yeah, it's come over the cut line for next time.
Yeah, and I was going to say.
Below gets funded, above.
And the TRIZ, reimbursement's a big.
Right, a big part of that.
Will, big, I'll have that conversation with Wilks. I'll, I'll try to reach out to them tomorrow. I'll reach out, but I don't know if Kyle's available or not. I will say this, anybody have any issues with the concrete projects we discussed? Because that's probably the.
Nope.
No.
Okay.
There's the main roads, we need to get them done and get them done right, and have a 20, 30-year asset for our city.
And I will say, um, as staff, because I talked with the parks, the staff that works on parks, we could have more of an estimate of the actual projects that we would know to be included if we wanted to include any parks holding in the, in the CO. All right, any other comments or questions before we move on?
Appreciate all the work you guys put in there.
Thank you, a lot.
Yeah, absolutely, and, um, yeah, thank you.
All right, the next item on the agenda is.
That was one of the best conversations y'all have had. That was marvelous, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hannah. Um, to, where the next item is to approve a request for a proposal for audit services for fiscal year 2021, 2025. Fiscal year 2021, 2022.
Yes.
Thank you.
So we're, we're about a year ahead.
It's going to go through, the contract will go through 2025.
Fiscal years.
Fiscal years. So that's, just to be clear, that's not for the audit that's going to happen in April that's coming up. That sounds a long ways away, but the night that Tech wins the national championship, it's not that audit. That sounds a long ways away, but the night that Tech wins the national championship, it's not that audit. This is for the, the current fiscal year that we're in now. Our fiscal policy says every three to five years, we will, we will put the RFP out. The auditing firm that we're using now, I don't believe they have a Fort Worth office anymore. I think that they have reorganized. In fact, if y'all remember, the guy that did the audit last year came from Minneapolis.
Yeah, Minnesota.
So we're, we're still under contract with them. They do a great job, they're just not local. And so we'll put the RFP out with y'all's permission, maybe get that in the paper, maybe this week, but probably next week with a December one deadline. And we'll have a recommendation for you guys at the December fourteenth meeting.
All right, any questions for Brian, discussion? Do we have a motion?
I move to approve the request for proposal for audit services for fiscal year twenty twenty one through twenty twenty two.
Second.
We have a motion in the second?
You say twenty two or twenty five?
Twenty five.
Twenty five.
Twenty, twenty two to twenty twenty five?
Yes.
Fiscal years.
Second.
Second, any discussion? All in favor? All right, the next item is discussion action to authorize the mayor's signature on a chapter three eighty agreement between city and UNCO. Do you want to discuss this all before we go to?
I'll, I'll sit there and say a three eighty agreement to answer your question, KJ, is, is a, and I'm just going to speak in generalities because we, we, Pat's not here, we're about to get Pat on the phone. So when we go to executive, we're not going to be discussing this, we'll have the attorney with us. It's an economic development incentive package. It's a common used tool with most cities. It provides incentives for businesses to come to Willow Park. UNCO is, excuse me, exactly what you said it was, it's a restaurant concept. And we're very excited about the potential of having them come to Willow Park.
And it further has nothing to do with the card room whatsoever.
Yes, has nothing to do.
They are not joined.
They are not joined in any way.
We are definitely not economically incentivizing that.
Yes.
All right, so are you ready for me to read my paragraph?
Yes.
Pursuant to the Open Meetings Act, Chapter five fifty one, Texas Government Code, the city council may convene into a closed executive session in accordance with the following authorities. Sections five fifty one point oh seven one, consultation with attorney, five fifty one point oh seven two, real property, five fifty one point oh seven three, prospective gifts, five fifty one point oh seven four, personnel matters, five fifty one point oh seven six, security matters, five fifty one point oh eight seven, economic development. Executive session may be held under these exceptions at the end of regular session, workshop and or special section, or at any time during the meeting that a need arises for the city council to seek advice from the city attorney as to the posted subject matter of the city council meeting. Without limiting the foregoing, the city council may convene into executive, closed executive section on the following. Five fifty one point oh seven one, consultation with attorney, chapter three eighty, and port card room. We are, we are going into executive session at seven fifty two.